Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the East Bridgewater Water Planning Board for Monday, June 2nd, 2025. I have a number of items on the agenda to go through tonight. Meeting is called to order at 7:07 PM. Here with us tonight in acting on the matters before the board, we have our members, regular members Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, Dwayne Crosby, Miles Heager, Vice Chairman Roy Gardner, Chairman, myself Kevin Riley, and our associate member Yvonne McCray. First order of business on the agenda tonight is the reorganization of the board. The tradition is that after the annual town elections, first meeting after the annual elections, the board does vote to reorganize. So that is open for discussion. The Chair would entertain any motions that would be made at this time. I guess, do we want it to individually or just as a group?
I'll make a motion that, for the upcoming year, for the offices of the planning board, that I'll nominate, Rachel Tedesco was the Secretary.
Second the motion. There are other nominations or a discussion with regard to the nomination of Mrs. Tedesco as Secretary of the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would, Chair would move to nominate Mr. Gardner as the Vice Chairman for the upcoming year. Second to the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Phillips. Discussion or another nomination for the position of Vice Chairman? Hearing none. All those in favor so signify by saying aye.
Aye. Could I make a recommendation for the Chair?
You can make a nomination.
A nomination?
Certainly do that.
I'll second that.
I'd like to recommend Kevin, not recommend, what's the word there?
Nominate.
Nominate, thank you. Kevin Riley for the position of Chair for the Planning Board.
Mr. Gardner, you seconded that motion?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Further discussion there? Other nominations for the position of, the esteemed position of Chairman of the Board for the next year? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. So voted. Reorganized. There are minutes that were, I believe, were made available. Did folks get copies of minutes? Yes, okay. So I believe those were for the meetings of 317 and 47?
I'll make a motion that we vote to adopt the minutes as written for 317 and 47.
Mr. Gardner makes the motion to approve the minutes without formal reading and in the form presented. Is there a second to the, for 317 and 47 of 2025?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Heager. Further discussion with regard to the minutes? Any changes, comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's a unanimous vote of all members present in voting. We have nothing in the way of Form A applications tonight. It is a little bit before 7:15. So we'll hang on for, we do have public hearings scheduled at 7:15. We may be able to... Ryan, right?
Yeah, we're good. So I do have an item I'd like to discuss briefly.
Yep, go right ahead. It's good feller. We need feller.
So for everyone's information, just to be clear about this, I am in a butthole something that's coming up before the zoning board of appeals on Wednesday night. Kind of an important, complicated issue here, but I live at 27 Grove Street, which is a lot directly behind Superior Pool. I also butt the lot next to Superior Pool, which used to be the offices for Compass Medical, where they did all their billing and record keeping. There's a petition before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for multifamily use in that building. Just want to make a note, and again, I am in a butthole. I am going to speak at that public hearing on Wednesday night as in a butthole, nor as a member of the planning board. But I just want to make it clear so everyone understands that the only mixed use that we allow in the town of East Bridgewater is in what's called the Business 5 District, which is downtown. We have some potential proposals for two of the other business districts, at least one of the other districts, business district, maybe two of the other business districts, to allow second floor residential uses in the town of East Bridgewater, to try and, let's say maximize the use of buildings along, primarily along Route 18, Route 14, Route 27, those areas that we have, the B3 and the B4 districts. As of right now, we don't allow what's typically referred to as mixed use zoning, which is commercial on first floor, residential on the second floor, again, except for downtown. So it's a bit of a complicated issue, and I'll admit, I'm a bit conflicted here because of my role on the planning board, but the issue before the zoning board of appeals on Wednesday night is not allowed by our current zoning bylaw. As a member of the planning board, I'll say that I'm disappointed that that was allowed to get this far to the public hearing. We shouldn't have allowed the applicant to spend a lot of money for the public hearings and so on and so forth. I don't understand how it got this far, but I was notified in the mail as in a butthole that the legal ads were already running, the Brockton Enterprise at that point, so there was, there was no chance to try and straighten that out ahead of time. But again, for the record, the planning board is proposing that at least for the Business 3 and potentially the Business 2 districts, for this fall, zoning articles that would change the requirement for those two districts to allow what would refer to in the accepted term as mixed use zoning, where second floor residential uses would be allowed above first floor business uses, whether it be office, retail, so on and so forth. There's a substantial amount of those districts within the town of East Bridgewater. A lot of them along Route 14, Route 27, and Route 18. Other towns within the southeast corridor in Massachusetts have found it extremely difficult to rent and/or lease second floor business uses in those corridors over the last five or six years. A lot of those second floor, and we have another one, not directly abutting me, but very close to me, where there's a current gun shop next to, or in front of what used to be the Foxborough Company property. Second floor of that property has been vacant on and off over the last four or five years. Number one, I think as a planning board, we need to do our best to make sure that those properties can be utilized for rental. Number two, it appears pretty clear that the only reasonable use for those properties is going to be residential, i.e. apartments. So I'd just like to add that I do believe at the fall town meeting, we definitely will have at least one article on the town meeting, or potentially two for the, I believe it's Business 2 and Business 3 districts, for second floor residential uses. So I apologize for, as noted, I'm in a bit of a conflicted state here as in a butthole. I'm also a 40-year member of the planning board, and I recognize that we need to do something to improve the financial return on our business districts. I believe that, given what other towns are doing right now, and with the housing problem, that second floor housing in those two business districts, which are typically 200 feet deep frontage properties along those routes, residential housing on the second floor in the form of apartments is definitely a reasonable proposal. So that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you. I think we've reached 7:15.
Took up just five and a half minutes. That was good. You know, just to follow up on your comments, you know, I think that some likewise, second floor residential over business properly situated is a good thing. I don't think that it should be done piecemeal. I think that if you're going to do it, the approach is, okay, you know, a Business 3, a Business 2 zone, anywhere in the town, you can do it. I've never exactly understood, in the time that I've been here, I've never exactly understood why, you know, the bylaws were set up the way that they are to allow the ZBA to make decisions sort of on a piecemeal basis that affect things like that. But that being said, you know, I think that the business over, the residential over business is a good way to, you know, to make certain properties more viable and to address the housing needs of the community at the same time in an affordable way. So. Anybody else with any thoughts on that before we... Okay. So with being 7:15, we do have continuation of the public hearing for the Smith property, 1968-1972 Plymouth Street. I see that the Smiths are here, and the esteemed Mr. Silva is here.
Are you going to be able to bring it up?
So I'll...
Mr. Technology here will have to answer that question for us.
So I'll have to confess that, as I always do come in the June meetings, I have a new notebook with me. The most recent login and password information is in my old notebook, which I don't have with me. So we're not going to be able to show that on the screen tonight.
You just blew my confidence in technology, okay? Because I was going to bring aboard, and at the last second after discussions with Rebecca, I says Rebecca, check, make sure the town's going to be able to bring it up. She did, and here we are.
All right. So if I could, Mr. Chairman.
You may.
For everyone's understanding, there's been some ongoing confusion here as to exactly what's going to be allowed and what's not going to be allowed for Smith property. As it turns out, there's two Form A lots on Plymouth Street, Route 106. Those lots were Form A'd some time ago. Form A simply means that those lots have the minimum frontage requirement, which is 150 feet, and minimum lot area requirement, which is 35,000 square feet, with a caveat that because they're in the watershed protection district or Zone 2 aquiferate district, which are basically the same thing, the total average lot size within those areas for new lots created has to be 45,000 square feet.
And so I can, you would like, I'll give you where we are, where we were and where we are. So I'm Larry Silva from Silva Engineering Associates, offices at 1615 Bethpage Street, Bridgewater. So what the subdivision plans that you saw last time was for a two-lot subdivision. The two-lot subdivision was based on the water resource district calculations using what was done previously on Ray's Way with the residual land, because it was all part of, the principal parcel was included the Ray's Way land originally. But I guess when the Ray's Way subdivision came through this board, there was an error that they made on that plan. And when they did the calculation for the resource district, they did not take out the roadway area. Because they did not take out that roadway area, the residual amount that was left over to be added to the area that we have for this parcel, instead of it allowing for two lots, it only allows for one lot. So instead of a two-lot subdivision, what we're brought before you in this revision was a one-lot subdivision. So it's basically, Red Maple Path is essentially a driveway leading up to a single house lot in the rear between the two Form A lots that we had brought to you in January, was it? I think it was January. So, and then the only thing we've done at this point is, so we show it in layout of a hammerhead type layout, and it's called Lot 3 on the plan. And we did section off from that lot that we're establishing Apostle A1, which, you know, it may end up just being part of this lot in the future. It may, if it's an opportunity to actually combine it to a neighboring lot, it may happen. But it's not a buildable lot. It's clearly shown that that area is not a buildable lot. So the lot that's created of this one-lot subdivision is a 1.69 acre lot, very large lot. The calculations revised per fixing the error that was from the original Ray's Way is shown on the cover page, I believe. Yes, in the cover page, over to the far left, it shows you the average, and it shows that because you have to have the average of 45,000. So it shows, initially shows the calculation based on the way it was done before, using the entire, the old Ray's Way subdivision, corrected for what was residual, and then what the average would be. But then alternatively, in the last sentence, it says that Map 1 Lot 4, which is the site that we're dealing with now, if considered independent of the parent apostle, results in an average of 54 885 square feet exclusive of the roadway area. So whether it's part of the Ray's Way or isn't, it still meets the requirements for the one-lot creation. And that's what we have before you tonight. It's much simpler, and this, so the two-lot subdivision has a lot more detail required, drainage and things like that. This is really just a driveway, which is really servicing that, servicing that one lot in the back. If you go to page 4 of the plans, page 4 of the plans gives you sort of a feel for how that, I'm sorry. Was I... You can hear. Blind disease got mine. So you see the detail on the page 4. So you can see the conceptual house in the back, the driveway leading down, and how it all is going to work out. So it's basically just a 16-foot driveway with a turnout, which is within the right-of-way that's set aside, and then continuing from that is the driveway to the house. And with that, I'll answer whatever questions you might have.
So where we've had some significant changes, I think, to the plan, we did close the public comment section last time through. I will however allow anybody in the audience who might want to comment further on this new plan to have a couple moments to do that. If there are comments. If not, I'll open to the board for any comments or questions. Anyone in the audience, second time through, during the final time? The board, ladies, any questions, comments?
I got a couple of things. Larry, we need a couple of notes added to this. Note one would be that Red Maple Path is to remain in common ownership at all times with the new lot being created by this one-lot subdivision, that being the lot is identified as Lot 3. I don't see that anywhere in the four pages we have. Second note would be that Apostle A1 shall at all times remain in common ownership within the abutting parcel that has legal standing under the zoning bylaw. Just has to be combined with the abutting land right now. It should be worded more detailed than that. Should be, remain in common ownership within the abutting parcel that has standing under the zoning act, under the zoning bylaw, I guess would be more appropriate.
Maybe we could discuss that wording of it later in terms of making sure that I get that exactly the way you'd want that on that plan.
Yeah, I mean, it merely is intended to make sure that it always stays in common ownership with one of the abutting lots that has standing under, under the zoning bylaw.
Which meets or has standing under...
So in overly simplified terms, if Lot 3 is sold, in its current form being 1.69 acres, I believe is that number, that Apostle A1 needs to be conveyed at the same time.
Right.
To one of the abutting parcels or to stay with Lot 3?
Right.
Okay, it can't stand alone as a separate piece.
So initially, it's associated with Lot 3 until such time as something has happened differently, is what you're saying?
If Lot 3 is conveyed.
And you can't convey...
Apostle A1 needs to simultaneously be conveyed to someone.
Okay.
That's an abutting property.
And then at the same, and then the other note is linking Red Maple Path, the layout to the lot itself.
So this is a one-lot subdivision under the town of East Bridgewater?
Basically, all those three parcels that we're talking about here are all related to one another.
Yes.
And so unless something acts upon it to take the parcel out, then it's still going to be with...
Well, theoretically, A1 could be sold to...
It could be sold.
SMJ Cranberry Associates LLC, which is an abutting property owner.
Yeah.
Could be sold to them. Could be sold to...
Yep.
The Ray Way common ownership parcel?
I don't think it...
Oh, no, they don't actually, they don't actually directly abut. No, you're right. You're right.
It could be the other one.
It could be sold to, what is that, 1862 Plymouth Street Realty Trust?
Yeah.
Could be conveyed to them.
Yeah.
It has to stay with one of the abutting parcels.
And those notes would be in the form of conditions of approval if the board sees it that way, and it would be added on the face plate of the...
Yeah, they need to be added on the plan. The plan will be referenced as part of the approval process of the subdivision, so.
Yep.
We need to see those.
We generally would take, we generally would put conditions of approval of the board, either wholly putting in the plan, I mean, the letter, or putting in the same narrative that's in your approval letter, so that there's no separation of it with the final plan.
Yeah, so...
We always reserve some area.
If we can, back on page 1, under the notes on the left-hand side of the plan, under the waterhead protection district heading. The last freestanding sentence there under that heading says alternatively Map 1 Lot 4, if considered independent. I'm not sure what Map 1 Lot 4 is, because there is no Map 1 Lot 4 on the plan. There's a Lot 1, Lot 2, and Lot 3, and then Apostle A1. There is no Lot 4.
Well, yeah, this... Zoning references Map 1 Lot 4.
Right, current assessors reference, I think, is what they're referring to.
The current assessors.
All right, so we need to fix that, reference the actual correct assessors map, because it can't be Map 1. I don't believe that's Map number one in the assessors maps, is it?
Well, Map 1, Ray's Way, all those are Map 1 numbers.
That's the entire parcel, right?
Yeah, that's what they're talking about. So we're saying that if you took the entire parcel, and you did the calculation just using what were the two Form A lots that were taken out before, and then this new third lot here, that if you did the calculation based on that, you still would meet the requirements. That's what that's saying. So if you didn't tie it to the previous one, you got it?
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just giving you two ways to show that it still meets the requirement. And I would add those other notes in, at the top of that page, in the first one.
Yep, that's fine.
That's where I would put in the conditions of approval, and then it would have those conditions that you're talking about.
Gentlemen, comments, questions? Yvonne?
We have a question down in the back there, so. It'll be a private way, owned by the, whoever owns Lot 3. It'll maintain permanent and common ownership of Lot 3, based on the required note that I said have to be added to the
I just have a quick question. I don't see Ray's Way on the map.
Ray's Way is actually west, which would be directly above this property.
The face, the face page. If you look on the first page, on the locus, Ray's Way is shown. So the site that we're looking at is one that's shaded in the reddish color.
Oh, okay, I get it.
Ray's Way is further to the west.
Got it is.
Got it?
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions from the board? Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 1968-1972 Plymouth Street as presented this evening.
Motion is made by Mr. Heager for...
I'll second. We'll add into that, that that's approved, there's Lot 3 being a one-lot subdivision. And noting for the record that Lot 1 and Lot 2, as shown in those plans, were previously approved as Form A plans approximately six or seven months ago.
So the motion is made by Mr. Heager to approve the one-lot subdivision for premises at 1968-72 Plymouth Street, Form A lots on, the face lots on Plymouth Street, having previously been approved under Form A, Form A procedure, I should say, with the, Mr. Heager with the waivers that are referenced in the, on the face of the plan.
Correct.
Yep. And with the stipulations regarding common ownership of both Red Maple Path and Lot A1. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Gardner, I'm sorry, Mr. Gardner already seconded. Sorry. So the motion is made by Mr. Heager, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Further discussion there? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. It's a unanimous vote of all regular members present in voting.
I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Larry. Always a pleasure. Okay, there are two other matters on the printed agenda for tonight. Leila Estates, we're just following. We'll keep that along for next month. I don't believe that the office has heard anything further. If not, we'll connect with the developer just to make certain with regard to the lighting. If not, we'll connect with the developer just to make certain with regard to the lighting and progress that's being made there with National Grid. And then the other is any discussion with regard to the job descriptions for the planning and building office, and Mr. Gardner, I leave that to you if you have any comment on that as an update from our discussion last time.
I'm, I'm just trying to finalize the additions to the higher level job description, which include the statutory support requirements for timelines, review of applications to the file to try and make sure they comply with whatever specific section of the bylaw that's noted in the application that comes in, to make sure that all the documentation is present with that. And then to keep note, we're going to work on some standard forms to track the times and dates. We have three different times and date filing requirements for legal ads, timelines for approvals, public hearings, and all those kind of things. Those three different timelines are based on special permits, on site plan approvals, and on subdivision control. We've always had that done in the past by a engineering consultant. A bit of a follow-up to that, which is tied into that, is that, that current engineering consultant situation is we don't normally now send new applications to our engineering consultant for review. The process we have, I think, as discussed previously, is a bit convoluted that we have to put together some kind of request for proposal, the engineering consultant comes back to us with a proposal. That proposal then has some timelines within it, independent of our timelines, the timelines that they need to see, that they can then send someone out to, to do work associated with those after we sign their proposal and file that proposal with a signature on it with the, the financial office downstairs. As expected, that's becoming a bit of a problem with the subdivision that's coming in off of Central Street, the new, I think it's a twenty-four lot subdivision if I remember correctly. We recently received a request for engineering review of that subdivision, a physical construction engineering review. Problem we have is they're ready to go now. We have to submit that to our consultant, that consultant will give us a estimate back. Estimate back needs to be reviewed and then signed off by Patrick Franny, our building commissioner. That then gets filed with, with the financial office downstairs. That then allows them to assign an engineer to come out and review that work. In the past, prior to having a third-party engineering consultant outside of the town as a private firm, that just came in and did that, the lead time to do that was one day. It's now two to three weeks. For developers when they're to town, that does not work. Another prime example is of, of why having an engineering staff directly reporting to the planning building department is mandatory. We're working on how to try and resolve that right now, I'm not sure how we're going to resolve that because they're ready to go. We don't have an estimate back from the consultant on the work and the timelines they need. Effectively, as, as we've discussed previously, we need someone that, when they say something needs to be reviewed from an engineering standpoint, we can provide someone within a day or two. The only way that works is if we have a town engineer as a direct employee of the town of East Bridgewater. We've got a couple other examples of that coming up. Not sure how we're going to resolve this, but we'll keep you updated as we try and work through this. Maybe at the fall town meeting we'll be able to address this better, but. Some of the, some of the timeline requirements, we hope to be able to cover within the office directly with the current, the current support staff that's in the office, with potentially upgraded job descriptions, with a commensurate upgraded salary with that, but again, can't directly answer that right now. Hopefully at our next meeting, or if not our next meeting, the first meeting in July, we'll have those job descriptions ready for the entire board to look over and approve and send on officially to the Board of Selectmen.
Last item I would just bring to the attention of the board, that is that this board, among others, has received correspondence relating to property at forty Stone Meadow Drive. It is a purchase and sales agreement and a notice to sell, notice of intent to sell, chapter sixty-one A or agricultural land, so-called. This is something that the selectmen are going to act upon on their, at their, or looking to act upon to consider waiving or not the rights of the town of East Bridgewater in that, in that premises, at their July fourteenth, I believe, meeting. So if we take it up at our next meeting, we'll distribute copies of this, and it will, it will come onto our agenda for the later June meeting.
Yeah, which I believe is, is June sixteenth.
Yep.
If my memory's right.
June what?
June sixteen.
So, so everyone understands this, I think we all understand what sixty-one A property is, right? Sixty-one A property is property that gets a significant tax break because it's defined as agricultural, and what that definition means is defined in state law, I'm not going to try and describe that, but it pretty, pretty much means it's a farm. It generates its own income from whether, whatever was grown or raised on, on that site. The property at hand is thirty-ish, give or take acres, that's currently classified as sixty-one A. So the way the law is supposed to work, as it's been read in the forty years I've been here, is that if your property is sixty-one A and you want to sell some part of that property, you need to take that property out of sixty-one A, pay five years of back taxes on that property at the, what would be the normal tax rate. You can then sell off, provided the town doesn't take the option of buying the property for fair market value. You can then sell off any small part or the whole property to a third party to develop in any, any ways that they see fit. What has happened, the last time this happened, and now this time, is I understand the proposal, is they're proposing only taking twenty-two thousand square feet out of sixty-one A. That's counted to what state law says sixty-one A is. Because if you, if you looked at that and walked through that process, they could keep selling off pieces of property on the sixty-one A indefinitely until the whole property's gone. And it would be of no benefit to the town to buy little individual pieces. So it, it is clearly defeats the intent of sixty-one A. Sixty-one A says if you want to maintain agricultural use, the town will give you a major discount in taxes, but you have to entrate, entrate for that, or as a, as a fair compromise, you have to offer to sell it to the town at fair market value at the time it's sold, or pay up to five years back taxes at whatever the tax rate would have been at that time. This does neither of those. And we've been advised, at least now probably fifteen, maybe longer than that ago, that to take land out of sixty-one A, you need to take the entire apostle out of sixty-one A, pay the back taxes, you can sell off whatever you want if the town doesn't take the option to buy, and then they can put it back into sixty-one A. That's not what they're proposing here according to where I've read the documentation and according to my understanding, talking to the assessors' office. That, in my opinion, based on the way state law reads, is a flagrant violation of the sixty-one A Act. Because that totally circumvents the intent of the sixty-one A Act. They could over time sell the whole thing off in little bits and pieces, which would be of no benefit individually to the town. The town would never have a chance to purchase the entire apostle, thirty-plus acres.
Or collect the tax money.
So what I'm suggesting is that the, the planning board formally request through the selectmen to get an actual legal opinion from a true land use attorney who specializes in sixty-one A, as to whether that's allowable the way they're proposing to do this. Because it's pretty clear when you look at, what I see is the case law, which admittedly is now ten or fifteen years old, that this doesn't seem to comply with that. Because anyone could propose their land to be sixty-one A and then sell off bits and pieces over time, one lot at a time, or in this case, one apostle at a time, and totally defeat the intent of sixty-one A. So I'll make a motion that we, we, we send a letter to the Board of Selectmen asking that they review this item, number one. Number two, cite the specific current on-point case law which has to do with this, and specifically answer back to the planning board why this proposal doesn't defeat the entire intent of sixty-one A under Massachusetts general law. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, so we're not going to discuss it on the sixteenth, discuss it tonight, apparently.
Well, I, I think we need to put that in front of us and then see what we get back, hopefully by the sixteenth, so we can discuss it further tonight, obviously, but.
I would second that motion. I think that would be a clarifier, we would need to discuss it, to what is our legal.
I would just say that in my other life, I've actually done that for clients and in other communities, and that, that point has never been raised, actually. So that's interesting. But I would, I would certainly have no objection in trying to get a clarification and, and just make sure that, you know, everybody's acting as they should. So Mr. Gardner's motion, as seconded by Mrs. Phillips, is to contact the Board of Selectmen and request that this proposal be examined by a land use attorney, and an opinion be solicited as to the legality of the process as it is being proposed for this premises. Fair summary?
Yes.
Discussion.
I have a question. Where is forty Stone Meadow Drive? I'm not, I can't place that.
Stone Meadow, isn't that off Central Street up here? Yeah, and if you go through the light that tumbling.
Yes, central, you'll see the street.
Yep, it's right, it's, is it the old?
It's the old Chapman farm.
Chapman School Farm, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
It was proposed to be a, to be used as a school at one time.
Franklin Street?
It was at one point, yes.
Yes, heading that way.
Yeah, I live around there.
Yeah.
Do we know what that?
Before Lapinski's.
Do we know what?
No, no, you're thinking, if you go to see the street.
What do they, what do they want to do?
Like you're heading towards Drytown, it's right up on the right, down there.
Yeah, yeah, I know where it is.
It's going from Central Street all the way.
Behind Brian Moe's house.
Yep.
Okay, so that, that is the motion that's on the floor. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of that motion so signified by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. It's unanimous vote of all members present and, or regular, regular members present in voting. So I'll draft something where I'll send it around for comment, and then we'll get it off to the. All right. Anything further to come before tonight's meeting? Hearing none, in the absence of Mr. Lawler.
Could I say, because this is since the election, congratulations on our newly elected, re-elected Dwayne Crosby and Kevin Riley. So I think you were on the ballot and you're newly elected, correct?
The only thing that depresses me is that Dwayne got ten votes more than I did. I know people that voted.
That should be, yes.
Finally, comment to that is I understand it does take some time to get the signatures on your nomination papers. It does take some time to do that and also indicates our commitment to fulfill the role, you know, for the town. So I do appreciate that, both for Kevin and for Dwayne. I consider that important, obviously, I consider that important. I've been here a long, long time, I still consider it important. We do a very important job. We need more diverse opinions, people who understand what we do and why we do it. Not to shortchange anyone here sitting at the table, but, but both Dwayne, and especially Dwayne and Miles, offer us some different views than maybe we've had in the past here. And those views are appreciated. We need to figure out how to move things forward, there's a lot going on right now in state law, local laws, local bylaws that we need to work on. So do appreciate the fact that we're keeping a full complement of board members here and that, that those members.
That those members attend the meetings.
Yes.
Always an important thing.
That, that sincerely appreciated. I understand from, a lot of the times it's hard to get to a meeting, it's, it's tough to, to keep doing what we do, but we need to do that. No one else in town's doing that, so it's up to us.
Yeah.
So thank you all.
Thank you. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Heager makes the motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Gardner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You love that part.